Are there any participants other than us?
I don't see any.
All right. Well, hello everyone. Welcome to Emmer's planning board housing subcommittee. It is August fourteenth at eleven o'clock, eleven oh one. We'll start with a roll call attendance of our reduced member subcommittee. There's only three at this point. Actually, I should check with that. I don't know how the meeting went. That I missed with the appointments and such was there? I assume there was no change.
No change yet.
All right. Please indicate if you're present. Bruce Coldem.
I am here.
Fred Hartwell.
I'm here.
I Jesse Major am also present. Great. I only have one announcement, which is I was traveling and then I was sick, so I'm not very well caught up. But here we are. So really that leads to no minutes yet from the last meeting. But I'll try and make sure I get that for next time. Any other announcements from any of you before we just jump right in?
Nothing from me, I don't think.
Okay. Nate, anything you want to share, the big picture things at all?
No, I was gonna say that I think. If not next week, probably in September, we'd have the planning board vote, you know, officers and could be committee, you know, organization or something. So. It's on the agenda for next week. I don't necessarily anticipate a vote, but maybe in the next month or so, if we wanted to have a new additional member on the housing subcommittee, we could have that.
Oh, so that did not happen at the meeting?
No, we spent a fair amount of time talking about the two zoning amendments, a little bit on North Amherst and then I don't know, at that point it was a three hour meeting.
All right. Actually, related to that, I did have an exchange with Kathy shown, I think made some comments at the meeting. And I can, I can share that email with you all. She seemed pretty opposed to even thinking about it, but you know, well, I'm not totally convinced. We had a little back and forth. She's certainly interested in continuing the conversation. So Bruce, I don't know if you know her from being in the district.
Oh, she, she and Larry are good friends. Larry, her husband is part of the North Amherst Community Farm Board. I have a T-shirt with Kathy's name on it because I walked around Amherst with her when, when she first ran. So I know her very well.
Yeah.
And she has asked, she's, she's come over. We've had a couple of long conversations in my living room. So I know how she feels. I made it clear how I feel and and that my personal interests are not necessarily more aligned with hers. But it seems to me that there are interests that of the town, which I represent. I don't represent myself or even really North Amherst. So that's where we are really.
Great. I mean, the sort of, it was not, it was a perfectly nice exchange and we both ended with.
He's a very thoughtful person.
We need to have, yeah, the main output was, we really should have a meeting with residents to discuss and get feedback.
Yes.
So yeah, right. And but we've already discussed that and hopefully it will happen. We talked about the September or October. I don't remember what the date was. There were some already scheduled district meeting.
There typically is because the councilors have an obligation to have two meetings a year. And one of those happens, you know, around September. And that's what she's asked me whether I would be prepared to come and talk. And my answer was yes, personally I am, but I'm not. I don't think it's appropriate that I should come and talk personally. I mean, I have done this before at this meeting. I've, and I, I've, what I've basically done is simply say, the planning board is doing this sort of work. It's driven by these considerations. The agenda is public. The discussion is happening. You all should, you all, and this is in the, in the, in these donor meetings, I said, you all should be interested in this because it's concerns people at this end of town. So I have, I've been quite happy as a, as a as a person who happens to be on the planning board, but also happens to be a resident of North Amherst to say that, make those kinds of statements, but I wasn't really prepared to stand up and explain the, where we were and maybe answer questions related to it without being an official designation of the board.
I mean, if appropriate, I'm happy to come and do that and I can take the heat and you can help leave the heat, right?
I don't mind. My, my reputation, my reputation in North Amherst is pretty good because of all the work I've done for many years on the farm.
So I'm. That's what I mean. If I present and they can get mad at me and then you can come in.
Yeah. Well, I'm quite happy to spend a good portion of that political capital, if that's what it's called, in the interest of having a fulsome explanation. I mean, it may very well go down, but I think it will at least have made the case as to what the problem is and how we need.
Yeah, that's all we can do. Fred, go ahead.
Yeah, I would be happy to attend such a meeting as well. And I would, well, I guess Jesse, both you and I would present something from the general residence zoning district. And at the, at the, sort of at the end of the planning board meeting, it was it was put on the table that it seemed like North Amherst gets things that the rest of the town doesn't want. And I concluded with, I rather thought that particular distinction went to the general residence zoning district rather than North Amherst. So anyway, so. But you know, what I would be prepared to speak to is the impact on the market as someone who has been a rental property owner for 53 years. And so I think I should have some credibility in that.
Sure. Yeah, that's great. Do we know the date yet? Or how does that get determined? Does staff, Nate, do you know, do you, are you guys made aware of those things from counselors or not?
Well, I just went to the donor website and they had a few things, but I, I'm not sure. I think we can, you know, we reach out to the counselors and see. And it, you know, I, yeah. So I don't, I don't know exactly when it is. It looked like there was something for October, actually, but I'm not sure if that's the meeting we'd want to go to.
Okay, as soon as we find out if we're gonna circulate that date and time.
There's a picnic on the 21st. Mary, it's the 21st of September, the picnic, is it? There's a donor picnic, which is a North Amherst picnic, which happens at the Mill River Pavilion on the 21st of September. That's not an appropriate location for this or event really. But that I think is the, the only known activity that's scheduled at the moment.
Okay, and I can, if it's something that the counselor's organized, I mean, since I've had this exchange already, I could just ask Kathy.
Yes, I think that would be, that would be.
And that we'd like to come. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll do that.
Yeah, to me, this, this, you know, I emailed an updated kind of rationale document. Maybe we share that and look at it. I do think it's important to kind of have, have an understanding of why we're looking at North Amherst. You know, Bruce, you had made some comments and there'd been some other comments made on this document. And yeah, I don't, you know, I think. Yeah, I think some residents might not like the idea of it. Other people in town might not like the idea of it. And you know, as long as they can understand why we're doing it and maybe, you know, it's a changing a little bit. You know, I said at the planning board meeting and Bruce kind of countered it. I said, well, it doesn't always, you know, a developer doesn't have to go to the full build out we're proposing. And Bruce said, well, let's not shy away from the idea that we do need more housing. And so, you know, there, you know, there could be, we could organize the permitting or the the development certain ways in the overlay. And so, you know, right now, a lot of these properties I mentioned are non-conforming to zoning. So they need a special permit. Most developers don't, they won't, you know, spend a lot of time and effort doing due diligence, knowing that it's a discretionary permit. And so. You know, if, so to me, the overlay is trying to come up with a, at least a site plan review permitting route to allow changes to these, to the apartment complexes and different properties in the overlay. And if we like it, maybe it can happen in other areas in town. But you know, I think that no one's really taking advantage of this kind of special permit in North Amherst that's happened once or twice, maybe three times around town, but it's, you know, limited case. So to me, that's another reason why we do an overlay. But I'll share the screen for the rationale document.
So before you do that, I had one other big picture thought. And maybe it was just a fever dream as I was pretty fevery on the flight home on Monday, but I'll dig it up and share with all of you. I may have shared with you, Bruce, ready? A while back, I was debating this idea on the south side of campus. So basically from campus to Fearing Street. And a possible idea for overlay in that region. And I had mapped out rentals and owners in that region. And I think there are only like some very low number of owner occupied places, like, like five. If with the data I had, it could be slightly wrong.
Out of how many houses?
Out of like a hundred or something.
Yeah. No, it's not 10.
And I have the, again, I didn't have a chance to find it yet, but I sort of mapped it all out and put little markings of what was owned and what was rented. Maybe there's better data now. But my thought was initially, well, let's make it over there and basically not maybe as tall as dense as we're talking about North Amherst, but really I just allow more. Essentially give up the idea that that's going to remain a single family neighborhood because it's not anymore. With fearing being the line. I got some very significant pushback from some of my neighbors with this idea, but like you Bruce, I don't feel like I'm representing myself. I feel like I'm representing what's best for the town. So that idea came back when I was thinking about pushback from North Amherst residents. Maybe we want to package it together. In saying, no, if we're not just pushing this to North Amherst, where this is really an effort for what's best for the town. And we're looking at these two areas which are adjacent to campus. As the most logical places to allow increased density.
Yes, well.
And then we're getting both districts. We're getting, you know, and it alleviates a lot of the not my backyard issues.
I had an even more outrageous idea. Which I'm not sure about packaging it, but in terms of diligent attempts to identify parcels of significant size on the essentially a budding campus. This other one, I don't know whether I sent to anyone other than Nate. It's actually a kestrel land. So that's what makes it kind of so outrageous. But if the donors, kestrel donors are still living. And, and since the land is so like this and that there's wetlands at the bottom, but the upland at the top and so forth, whether the parcel could be divided. So it's, it's a, it's, it's it falls into the category of heroic attempts to identify suitable or possible locations for higher density housing specifically for students that would work for students and, and whereas this kestrel neighborhood is this kestrel parcel is would seem to be clearly out of bounds in terms of its conservation land, it fulfills every other positive characteristic that we're talking about. So it falls into, if it represents an attempt or demonstrates an attempt by the board to, you know, no holds barred in terms of really trying.
Yeah, I don't disagree. I did just find that PowerPoint together. Let me just share with you guys briefly. And I think we could probably update it. Can you see my screen now?
I can.
Yeah. So this again, this is the region I was thinking about sunset fearing North Pleasant. And I marked them as far as I could tell, this was six months ago from the town data with what's known to be non-owner, non-owner occupied, what's known to be owner occupied. And I, I, from walking around, I believe these five are wrong, that these are actually rented. So my numbers weren't exactly right, what I just said to you, but it's pretty overwhelmingly rented. And there's some that are just, I don't have the data on.
Yeah.
So that's how I was trying to visualize it, which I think is pretty compelling. That it's basically a student neighborhood already. So yeah, I will try and update that and we can come back to this idea at some point. Cause I don't think we, we want the same overlay is what we're talking about for, you know, what we're calling North Amherst. Cause I don't think we want five stories here, right? But anyway, it could be another significant.
Well, this neighborhood is quite different from the North Amherst neighborhood insofar as we've got many, many small independently owned parcels.
Right.
So we would have to decide what we would think was, are we, are we talking about an overlay that would encourage aggregation, parcel aggregation? Or are we talking about an overlay that would encourage conversion of one families to two families, for example?
I was thinking of both of those.
Yeah, well, that's.
Predominantly the one family to whatever, four family. I don't know.
Yeah.
But yeah, aggregation is fine. I don't know. I mean, I actually don't even know. Are there, are there, do we have zoning again that doesn't allow aggregation?
I don't think you can.
I know you can. I think the you don't, yeah, we don't necessarily get into that kind of. You know, how properties are purchased privately or.
But if I own these two, couldn't I come and request that we made a single?
Oh.
Yeah, it would be an A and R, right?
It would, yeah, yeah. Yeah. No, I mean, this, you know, this is, some of these properties are part of what was the gateway study, you know, 10 years ago, and there was some pushback there, I think.
I'm well aware of that.
Yep.
I was here for that. And I mean, I also know some of the key players who I'm very friendly with in pushing back have moved, have given up. Has reason to do it, but like, you know, they're now rental houses. So.
Yeah, I've had, I've, I've had other people actually mention this area as for redevelopment as well. So it's not, to me, it's a kind of logical, actually, in terms of this proximity to UMass and what it could look like. And yeah, so you know, there are a few three families on Phillips. Yeah, but right. I mean, I've often thought. You know, when UTAC met to the town gown committee, there were some discussions about having a pedestrian corridor north of fearing to try to get students off of fearing from Southwest. And so, you know, some of this would be, you know, if this were an overlay, is there a way to encourage something like that that either comes, connects to Phillips or, you know, anyways, right? Like just still, still encourage kids to come downtown, but you know, maybe there's another alternate route as well.
But I think it's super logical, all of these things. Um, I would, if I would be happy to add to our discussions a little time for this and think about if we want to present them together along with the kestrel property. But I'm just one opinion. I don't know, Bruce and Fred, how you feel about it. The last thing I'll say is I feel good about this being presented because this is my backyard right down here. So I'm on the map. So it's definitely in my back.
Well, in principle, I, I sense that it might be. I don't think it would hurt. It's a question of whether the staff has got the, the time and whether we have the resources to carry two bags at once.
Yeah. I mean, you know, the north side of fearing is part of the local historic district. So to me, that's actually a positive. So if there were changes. You know, it's also the appropriate facing the street. Yeah, I, yeah, you know, it's interesting. I it's almost to me, it would be like the part of the overlay we're looking at in North Amherst that is within, you know, we have this buffer kind of a few hundred feet back from North Pleasant and Meadow. And it's almost like, you know, some of those ideas with that could then be applied here, you know, is it three stories and what? If we have any flexible design standards or something, then that's what could go here. Yeah, I think. Yeah, I think the difficulty right now is the way we permit multi-unit projects doesn't encourage, you know, scaling up from even like one to four, right? Four becomes an apartment on our zoning. It's a special permit. If I don't have the lot sizes on these properties. And then, you know, there's sprinklers, so the building construction gets expensive. So I feel like someone might. You know, I don't know what the, what the numbers are like, what do they, would they really go from one to four? Or they'd rather go from like one to I don't know, six or 10, I don't, you know, whatever the number is. But I think. Yeah, I, you know, again, to me, the overlay isn't. It's not compulsory, right? It's not telling them they have to do it, but it's an opportunity if someone just says, hey, you know, I have two properties next to each other. And I think I could get a 20 unit building in there and make it look nice. Then, you know, we've went from maybe four units to 20. That's.
Yeah, I definitely agree. And, and actually there's some other similarities because I'm pretty sure the topography also slopes. I mean, I ride down the hill every day to work, but from fearing the campus is probably two story drop because the new fieldstone very nicely does exactly what we're thinking, talking about for North Amherst, meaning on the university end, it's five stories, I think, and it stays level by, by height, because as you go up the hill, it then becomes two story. So it's a very nice design capturing exactly what we're trying to accomplish in North Amherst. Anyway, point is on Philip Street. Philip's one that goes east west. Yeah, there's, you know, you can maybe be higher than you are on fearing and it would still look, you know, it wouldn't, it wouldn't poke up above.
Yeah.
So there's opportunity to build that in potentially as well.
Well, factoid Jesse, my wife, I'm not sure that she was lived there on Philip Street when she was born. But she lived in that single heart house that you've got there when she was a toddler.
Nice. Nice. There's some really nice old houses there. I feel sad about, but you know.
Yeah, no, you're right. I'm looking at the topo map now and it's, you know, 15 to 20 feet difference between fearing and, you know, when you get you know, to Philip Street, it's, yeah. So even beyond that, it's more so.
Yeah. So yeah, I'd love for us to honestly build that in. Even if it takes us a couple of extra months to get a real proposal together. I feel like for the political side of presenting this, it would go over better.
Yes.
Versus presenting one, I mean, a lot of pushback, so will be and back and forth, back and forth. And then a year later coming up with another, go through the same process, right? So.
I see. Yes. Have one force countering another.
Basically, yeah. Okay, let's, let's put this on the agenda for next meeting, maybe. And just for further discussion and let's try and work out some more details. So Nate, you want to take us through the new version?
Nate, I'm wondering whether you would consent to putting up what I wrote, because that would save me from saying all of the things that I've already, and you can tell the difference because I, I put it in red. My stuff was in red. Yes, and your stuff was in black. So there's, this, 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 there's not much that's deleted from what you said. I rephrased a few things and it's fairly obvious. And then mostly what's in red is added.
Yeah, no, I think this is important to take a look at just to understand.
You want to read it?
Yeah, I mean, I just, you know. I was gonna say, yeah, so there's changes in red from Bruce and we can, you know, this hasn't been presented to the planning board yet. So the idea would be we could include this in the packet for next week's meeting if we, if we like it. You know, it's a work, to me, it's a working document. So you know, it can come from the housing subcommittee and it, you know, can be changed.
I think this was in the packet, the last meeting, wasn't it? Because that's how I got it. I don't think you sent it to me.
Oh, I don't think the change, your changes, Bruce, I guess. I mean.
No, no, that's true. That, that, that hasn't gone anywhere except to you and that's it, I mean. So all I did with the first paragraph there with the four red things was to change. For example, I changed the exorbitant to high and, and things like that. I just basically tempered the adjectives a little.
Yeah. Sorry, this is reminding me of one more thought I wanted to share, which actually happened while I was on vacation. So I was in Wyoming and we ended the day in Jackson. You guys have been to Jackson. And as we drove in, there's a population sign like everywhere. And it's only 10,000, right? Which is not so different from us. But it's, it's a such a wealthy place, even though the surroundings are like our surroundings, very economically lower. And the reason it's so wealthy is that I believe the town makes a killing on all the there's a lot of taxes that happen from all the commercial industry and all the very expensive housings, right? So it just brought me back this idea of trying to increase taxes somehow on the rental situation. Anyway, I just want to put it out there. I'm going to try and explore that as well.
I suspect that those expensive houses are not occupied year round and they probably don't generate school kids. So it's a, it's a very, the only problem is very much like Martha's Vineyard. I know I've been quite involved in Martha's Vineyard where the where the cost of housing is driving out the the, you know, the, just like here, the, the, the working population. And.
Anyway, sorry to derail us again. All right.
Yeah, I mean, I think the changes in the first paragraph are, are fine. I mean, I think it's, it's a nice summary of what yeah, the situation.
We could put with the, there are an estimated 9,000 students seeking off campus residents in town. You might say that that's 80 or 90% of the rental demand. I mean, it's, it's almost all of the rental demand in Amherst. I don't think we need to say that, but it could be.
Do we know that number?
We think we do. You know, that thing I did called populations of Amherst where I my, my data here says that.
So, so maybe you want to insert a sentence after that that says there are only X number of, but they're only, approximately only 5,000 rental beds available in the town of Amherst or something.
All right.
Well, I don't know that. Says here, who my data says number of students housed off campus locally, that's 10,936.
Yeah, let's make a note to kind of add a statement about number of rentals compared to students that we can.
Even if you just pulled the town data, I mean, that's what we should be able to lean on, even.
Yeah, we have, right. We have a new housing production plan. So I was thinking we would just get it from the HPP.
To just say there are, there are this many beds currently.
Hold on, I, I made a mistake. That, that's the number of students housed off campus locally and locally includes neighboring towns. And then number of students housed off campus in various types of rental housing within Amherst, 9,113. And the source of that is University Community Relations Memo Fall 2024. Tony Marullis emailed to George Ryan February 11th and also George, Tony Marullis emailed to George Ryan, February 11th, 2025. So two cited sources for that number. And I think that's probably where the housing plan gets their data from. I think I've got the same source.
Yeah, yeah. Maybe you do want to add, you know, a parenthetical source from UMass data or something like that. So that give a little. I know we're not just saying.
UMass Community Relations Fall 24.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think the numbers, when it was first presented in the housing production plan to different groups, it was, no one quite believed it. Sometimes I, you know, I think it was qualified. So I want to, I want to check the housing production plan. I think, you know, what, I think what Tony went back to say is when you aggregate the data, I think it included say remote students or maybe student, you know, it's just, it's just.
I think I pulled the remote students out.
Oh, you did? All right.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I've got this whole goddamn thing which has been circulated some months ago where I, I wanted to understand the population data from Amherst as it, by asking a whole bunch of different questions. And, and trying to actually get down to the what was the population of this, of that and all this kind of thing. So it's, I was pretty careful.
Yeah. No, I mean, at this point, to me, if it was 6,000 or 900. Yeah, no, I mean, at this point, to me, if it was 6,000 or 9,000, it's still a very large number. And so, yeah, you know.
That's also why the sort of current registered beds becomes important. On the rental registry.
Yes, I don't, I don't have that number in my population.
All right, but I mean, I, I assume Rob can easily just. Pull that up, right?
Yeah, I imagine if, if that's.
I think, yeah, I think like we say to, you know, although the rental registration renews in July, it takes a few months to finalize it. So we'd have it for last year and then, you know, there's probably some variation.
That's where this number is anyway, right?
Yeah, yeah.
That's perfectly appropriate to me.
Yeah. And then, you know, there are some changes here, which I think. Um. You know, maybe I don't want to change this statement a little bit about the. University. I don't, we're not sure. I think, I think what, what I would feel comfortable saying is that they're, they maintain their current. Uh, number.
The, the, one of, one of Kathy Shane's, uh, um. Uh, central points of argument is that the university should be doing this, not the town. So that's why I think it's important to say that the university is not committed to providing more housing. More than they already provide, which they believe is more than, uh, is, is a, it, it makes them look good in, you know. The, according to national levels of camp, on-campus housing. But Kathy's view is that this is the job of the, the university, not the town. And she also believes that, that Hadley is better able to, uh, accommodate students than, uh, Amherst. So those are the two arguments that she's advancing.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, you know, UMass does house a large proportion of their students on campus. Um. I mean, honestly, I think it's, would be a somewhat of a missed opportunity if we didn't have more. Taxable housing, you know, in, in the right location around town. So I think. You know, the University Drive overlay in my mind is, is a really nice example of multi-unit development that'll have a number of benefits and some being. You know. Economic development and housing.
Yes, that's, that's a good point, Nate. We should make that somewhere. I had, I not, uh, I haven't added in here, but I think we should somewhere later on is that. Providing this housing, I had said, you know, because of Article 15 that's recently been enacted. Um, if we build student housing, we also get 12% of it as affordable housing. So that doesn't happen if it happens on campus.
Right.
And as you said, we get the tax revenues and so forth. So I think both of those points, uh. We, we should make sure are not lost in, uh, in the weeds.
Yeah, let me just, um, take it. Sure.
Sorry about that. Okay.
And then I added the piece about within the town, uh, there's a lack of affordable building sites. This is really the, the argument that, uh. That many people, but most recently and most publicly, I guess, um. Golly, what am I? Um. Kyle, Kyle Wilson made. That, uh, you know, there's, there's just so few sites and Kathy's view, Kathy Shane's view also is that, that the, the, uh, that, that the. Um, Puffton Village is so nicely, uh, works so nicely. Uh, and, and that adding density there will disrupt, uh, a nicely functioning community. And my view is that's probably true, uh, but. It's, um. It's a bit of a. I was going to say dog in the manger. What I mean is it's a sub-optimized resource.
Yeah, it's also, I know from my own kid and friends, it's not cheap and it's rather paltry. Situation, apartments, like it's not, I would, I know physically outside what you're saying, but I don't think it's a. Very ideal living situation for many reasons. Anyway, um, sorry, I need to back up for a second. I was on the call. Uh, I think we should change that sentence, uh, but the university is not committed to providing. Also politically minded, I would say. Although the university has announced a long-term plan. To increase or to assess housing needs, this won't be in effect for many, many years or something like that.
Yes, okay. That's, that's a better way of doing it. I may really meant that it's not effectively committed.
Yeah, I, I just don't think we need to point fingers because.
No, I wasn't trying to do that. I was trying.
I agree with you.
But we can't rest, we, we, we can't wait for the university to do it. I mean, it's, it's got all sorts of other. Mouths to feed, shall we speak.
Yes.
All right, yeah, it's, um.
And, and, you know, I, I, I think it can, uh, make a reasonable case that it's already done more than its, many of its, uh. Um. Colleagues around the country.
If you want to end with, you know, therefore the town must take action now. Take action as quickly as possible to relieve the pressure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, I can work that a little bit.
Yes, I think, yeah, this, I, I think if you can just kind of note, Nate, what, how you want to rebalance this or not rebalance it, but, uh. Because what we're trying to do is to explain to our, um. Our constituents or whatever. Our colleagues, our neighbors. Um, what the situation is, what's driving this bus.
Sure. Yeah. And I mean, I also think that if, say, zoning were in place north of Fearing or even here. You know, could we then work with UMass to get another public-private partnership? Or is there some other, you know, opportunities that we're not thinking of right now?
I think that's a good add too, because that's what happened with the university housing. Uh, just north, uh, just south of, uh, Puffton, right? That was a. That was a university, or Doug Marshall would know about this, of course. But it's called university housing. I, I thought it was a project that the university, uh, was involved in. And so why not continue that? Except instead of making it two stories, make it more. Get more value out of the path, out of the land.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think this paragraph Bruce about the lack of building sites is important because, you know, and I wrote here insights connect this utilities and infrastructure. Um, and the tax revenue and housing piece, I think that, you know, unlike a lot of communities in the area, Amherst does have the kind of. Kind of the capacity in its infrastructure and utilities to handle this. And so, you know, I, I think Hadley could also play a part in other communities. I'm not saying let's put, you know, 10,000 new beds in Amherst, but I think there's some amount that could be put in, in the community.
Another thing, the other pro you could add is the. We want, if, if Amherst is going to house more students, we want them walkable to town. For all those benefits to town livelihood, right?
Right. No, I agree.
Yes, that is a, an argument because I, I know that, uh, quite a number of, uh, folks in North Amherst that I talked to about this. Point to the, uh, the, the malls, the Hampshire Mall, for example, as being a. A, a big open space that is kind of away from everything that would. Uh, be able to support a, a whole new village of students.
Yeah.
And, uh, but of course. They wouldn't necessarily have much to do with, uh, town.
Mm-hmm. All right, and here's, um. Yep.
I added this, uh, paragraph of red basically because I thought it, we hadn't, you hadn't known enough to say. That the strategic approach to this is, um, a zoning overlay. Um, and it's, uh, there's a reason why we decide not to just change zoning because it's, uh, it's too disruptive. But the zoning overlay approach, um, is a more delicate, incisive and geographically specific, uh, intervention. And geographic specificity is. Important here because we've already identified that we want this housing to be. Um, closely associated with students want to be, which is the campus. And if not on campus, then immediately adjacent. And so the overlay approach is very consistent with geographic specificity and, uh. And, and that's the strategic, uh, approach that we're adopting. And there's no reference there to that it's, we think successfully implemented in. University Drive, successful insofar as it's passed through council. We don't know whether it's successful. Beyond that yet, although it's beginning to look like it will be.
Yeah, I, I like this. I have two suggestions, uh, which are the same thing, just repeatedly, because I'm always a fan of making important points multiple times.
Yes.
The first is, in the previous paragraph, one approach to solve this problem. Is to adjust our zoning bylaw to allow areas greater density, parentheses, but not to require. So it makes the point, we're not mandating this, we're, we're making it available. And then again, at the end of this new paragraph, Bruce wrote, basically say the same thing in a sentence. Importantly, this is not a mandated density. This is allowing developers to consider greater density.
Right.
Allowing or encouraging?
Encouraging, sure.
Yep.
To meet the town's needs.
Yeah, consider go back to that. Um.
And then if, uh, Jesse's suggestion is, uh. We may make way for, or at least by saying with this in mind, the identified section is one of the few, or actually it does say one of the few. So it's already means that there are other possibilities, I guess.
Yeah.
And we could then say another is, uh, or others are. Are the, are currently under consideration, or we might notify that to basically, uh. Uh, change the, change this document in the fullness of time to be, uh, introductory to, to or more, um, uh, overlay districts.
Yep, agreed.
Yeah. And then I, you know, I liked some of the, the rationale, um. Yeah, I think it's important. I think, you know, if we meet with North Amherst residents and then, you know, I, I agree that there's probably. You know, a few areas in town that could support this. So we're not, you know, to me, if we're looking at East Amherst. You know, like Doug mentioned at the Plaine World Meeting, it is away from campus. Um, it might be nice to have density there, but then you're bringing people through downtown. There may be other issues with public transit. And is it really where we want to focus? A, a number of students where there's places that are more proximate to the university.
Yeah.
So I, I think the answer is yes, yes, and yes. And yes, bringing them through town has problems, but also has benefits.
Right.
Right? I mean, that means 50% of those students are going to hop off the bus, get a coffee, get a pizza, and then hop back on the bus to go down to East Amherst.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a, I think it's a lower priority right now, right? So I think, yeah.
I don't know. Have you walked through town in the summer? I mean, it's not, I think the businesses could use some help. Anyway.
Yeah. I mean, I will say that the town, you know, we, we had applied for a grant to look at East Amherst. Uh, help with rezoning will know in the fall. Um, so it. Or the idea is if it comes through, then we have, you know, for next year, we'd have that would be, we'd have some assistance doing that.
Maybe, maybe what we want to do, assuming we go to this District One meeting is sort of, if we're going to present, is start with a map and. Highlight North Amherst, highlight Fearing Street Gateway, highlight East Amherst and say, these are the areas we're talking about. Tonight, we're talking about this one, something like that, so that it's clear from the beginning. You know, we're not, it's not the solution.
I, I think you're right. And I think having the UMass campus grade or designated, so proximity to, per, uh, campus, uh, this is, is, is clear. And then we have another map that shows the, the essentially the Black Mind, uh. Um, district overlay proposed, so people can see what's in and what's out. Um, I could do another density study, um. Uh, um, I walked through this, uh. I, I, I'm sorry, I went through, uh, Puffton again, the other, yesterday, actually. And I realized that on, which you can't see right now, is on the southern side. Oh, now you can. Um, there's a, a very, there, there's a ditch, a drainage ditch that starts up near the red line. And heads west. And then as it goes down where your cursor is now, that is, that is a, that is a gully. It's a, a colossal drainage ditch. So that's clearly a wetland. So there's going to be a boundary along that, I imagine.
Yeah.
And, uh, which I didn't consider in my, uh, initial overlay. And also, um, I, I, you know, we, uh, we've, uh. I, I made the mistake of, of figuring that we should have. Three, five, and seven. Well, I think it really should be three and six. Uh, because as you pointed out, that seven stories really is a, above a. A, a, an un, uh, viable threshold of creating a formerly at high-rise. So we're not going to go seven, but it's going to be six almost definitely. And so I could do another density study prior to the meeting if we, if, if, if we think that would help, or do we think that we already know more or less what. The site can absorb.
Yeah, I, I mean, if you're interested in doing that work, it'll be useful at some point. Um, I'm not, I'm not sure at the meeting. Need to get into that weeds that far.
Um, yeah.
I think it's important to point out exactly what you just raised, that. There are all these limitations already. So it.
Yeah.
Not like we're gonna.
Hmm.
We're not going to add five X capacity here. Like, you know, I'm sure that's what everyone thinks, oh, somebody would have eight-story buildings everywhere, but because of all these restrictions, there is some limit that we'll reach.
Um. In my conversations with Kathy, you know, we've, we've mentioned, well, the, 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 what's attractive about this is the large footprint sites, um, so forth. And that there are few, there are a few big sites. And I've gone through each of them, but conceptually saying. You know, Townhouse is a, is a big site. It's limited, I think, most especially by the distributed ownership. It's not under single ownership. Um, moving south, that the, uh, Brandywine is interesting, but that site is more specifically emitted by the impact of wetlands and water flowing through it. Uh, and the buildings there are already three stories as opposed to one and a half. And they're newer. And then you move to Puffton, which is the largest. Um, uh, and, uh, and, and under single ownership. And it's also, doesn't seem to have much in the way of, uh. Wetlands limitations, although they're, they are there, but it's such a big site. It's, the four parcels are 44 acres, I think. And then, of course, as we move down further, we've got the University Village. Well, that's all new. That's, that's new. So then the thing is, do you want to? Who's going to tear that down and build a, a new development three years after? They've just done that already. And then you've got Presidential, which is, I haven't looked too closely at that, but that seems to be somewhat in the, in the same category as. As, as Puffton, except it's, it's half or less the size. So, um, Puffton seems to be the prize. And, and, uh, um. Um, Kathy says, why not? And also she says, well, over the road, you've got Crestview, which is the, the most disreputable of all of these. Uh, why aren't you there? So we might want to answer that question. Um. But, uh, you know, I think in any conversation that we might have with the residents, we can probably do that. Brief diagnosis of the opportunities associated with each of those five. Large parcels that we've essentially enclosed, enfolded in that black. Boundary.
Yeah, I mean, it's interesting. Like, would we make the overlay smaller? Maybe that's a possibility. I don't think we need to start there yet. Um, but. You know.
I don't think so. I mean, I, it's, it's logical. Every one of those, I mean, there, uh, there, there, there are different opportunities associated with each of those parcels. Uh, but they're all, um. Similarly, uh, the, the opportunities are similar with each and they're completely different from this, what exists in the surrounding neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
The, the other question, other, uh, topic that Jesse, you've pointed out, uh, or is, is, given that we will, um. Acknowledge the practical impossibility of connecting any or all of these parcels directly to Route 116. Um, your note, I think, Jesse, or, uh, actually it's, maybe it's, 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 I think you'd mentioned that the, if you folded into the manageable. Impacts, uh, mentioning, uh, access to 116 through the, uh. Through Meadow Street. And so, uh, have you, have, I don't know how that would happen necessarily. I mean, I can, there's various possible ways, but it's a, it really requires. Actions on, on one or two of those sites, uh. Because I think Townhouse basically is the, uh. The conduit to Meadow Street and, and you couldn't do much without disrupting those, that particular development.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is there any, is there any way in which connections to Meadow Street could be made without?
I mean, there, there's a few properties to the west, you know, west of, on Meadow Street, but I think it's a, that's a difficult.
Yeah. And then you'd have to go through, if you wanted to get to Puffton, or to the larger body of the opportunity of the site around Puffton and Presidential, you'd have to bust through Meadow and Brandywine would do, and, and, and there are barriers there.
And it is interesting looking at this, you know, it's like, you know, is there a, a way to, it almost looks like there is, right, a street here, and it's like, if there was another street here, it's like, does this become a neighborhood that has a few connections and then, but it's a, it's a you really have to work with a few different property owners, but.
Yeah.
I mean, again, I, I know there's wetlands, but I just want to continue that big east-west street, straight over to 116, right in the middle of, uh.
Right here.
Yeah.
Yep, it's so obvious.
Yes, it is.
But there's already some work done even more to the west right there.
Yeah. What, what you should know is where those trees are, you can see the, the slightly inclined vertical bank of coniferous trees there. At that point where the cursor is, there's about a fifteen-foot drop to the left, to the west. It dropped right down, just down that, it's not even a slope, it's an, almost an escarpment at the tree line. It drops ten feet straight down. It's almost as though that whole end of the site has been filled, which it probably has originally. So the, the topography drops sharply at the tree line, down to those sheds on that there, yes, between where you're, between there and the tree line, there's about a I don't know, ten or fifteen-foot drop, I think.
Even better, you know, bridge over the wetlands, no problem.
Well, that's.
But yeah, I, I see what, um, yeah, to me, what I, you know, looking at it in this aerial view, and, you know, you can say that each of these units at Puffton, I think, is about four units. But, you know, Jesse, to your point, I, you know, I agree, there's open space and, you know, it is, there's mature trees and it's nice when you drive in there. But in terms of, you know, you could double density or triple in spots or more and still have it be a nice site plan, and so I'm not.
I agree.
You know, it's not, yeah.
And the, the, Kathy, Kathy's repeating Bover and, and Steve Walczek. The thing is that the management of this, this place is, Puffton has been there for quite a while, and they've, they've got a consistent management, they've got a guy there who really knows what he's doing, he's a, he's a good man, I think, and he's made it his business to manage this community effectively as a, as a student, as a substantially student accommodating place. And he says, he will, I think, speak from his considerable experience, and I think to the point of view of a lot of people credibility, that if you were to double or triple the number of people living here, the whole management plan would go to hell in a handbag. To which I said to Kathy, well, it's a bit like, you know, when you, if, if you, if you, if you increase the size of the spigot, you increase the size of the hose, in other words, you would have to have a commensurate management plan to deal with it. And, and just because you travel the size, if you were, of course, if you were to use the same management concepts for a thing that's three times the size, it would fail, but I'm, I, I was maintaining that we have to, and so I'm struggling to get a good analogy, a good metaphor, a good, a good paragraph of simple elevator rap that explains that you scale up the problem and you scale up the solution. And that it should be manageable. But that's going to be a hard sell in a place where, which is more likely Townhouse these days, where Barney Blowouts become a disagreeable event in the, in the annual life of North Amherst.
I was thinking about that argument too. I haven't quite formalized in my head yet, but, but we need to come up with a response to that, that we all are consistent about.
Yes, but it, it has to be, uh, has to be, it has to be a story, you know, a good story.
Yeah.
And, and we have to believe it.
But it can't be.
And right now, I'm not sure that I do, that's the thing, I have.
Right, right, yeah.
I'm not sure that I believe my own.
I'll put it for later, but it's on my.
Yeah, I, I, I just jumped to the draft overlay, I just wrote, you know, need strong management plan, I do think it's, um, yeah, yeah, you know, I like to think that if a company came in and said, oh, we're proposing something big, that they would have the ability to manage it, you know, I think North Square is really well managed by Beacon Communities. It's not, you know, it's, it's a pretty big development. And some of it is they have the staff and they have, you know, probably clear expectations when you move in, what, you know, what's in the lease and what they want from behavior, I don't, you know, I don't know.
Also, have there been, I mean, since the keynote event of Barney Blowout, have there been o- other big issues?
I think, you know, this past year, there was, you know, or you know, every once in a while, there's, you know, large gatherings, I think they've been better managed.
Yeah, but nothing on that scale, I mean, I think that's a pretty compelling argument, that the town has put pressure on these land places and hasn't really happened again, right?
Yeah, and I think it's, you know, in collaboration with UMass and Emergency Response Police and everyone, yeah, even, you're right, the property owners and managers, and so, you know, it, it, right, it's things like, you know, guest, a guest policy at these places, you know, parking. You know, I think before it was pretty, some of these places might be, might have been pretty relaxed, and then they also, like, you know, who can walk there, but some of that's the design piece, and I think it's really hard to, yeah, it's interesting, it's hard to require, you know, have specific zoning regulations that can get to that, and to me, that happens during permitting, right, you'd have to have some,
Right.
maybe some conditions, mentioning that, right, like, a site design that allows for, you know, or reduces possible large gatherings, and then it's really then, how do you, how do you review that?
Can, can, um, can we build in things like, if you're over X number of beds, you know, the management plan has to include security walking around, or, you know, some, something like that. Is that, is that possible, is that something we can do?
Yeah, yeah.
I think so, I mean, for example, we, there's probably a ratio of living managers to to units, and we should know, we should have a sense of what that ratio is, what ratio guarantees good order.
Yeah, maybe that's the easier way to do.
And require that, but there are probably other ratios or other strategies as well, that we might be able to hold in, if we knew what they were.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I think those are the things that you'd, right, we might not get specific, but we'd have, you know, these as kind of conditions that would then be have to, you know, the applicant would have to describe it through permitting, yeah. Yeah, I know, I agree, I think there's probably ways to do it. I know, I, I, I thought Kathy, you know, brought up some good points at the planning board meeting, at the same time, you know, the way we looked at the overlay in terms of density in the back and reduced in the front along the street, to me, you know, whether or not we even, we modify it, I think it's a nice approach, and so, you know, if we're trying to encourage multi-use path connections, if we want to work with UMass and PBTA to try to, you know, if there's enough students here, would there, could there be a more dedicated bus route, you know, or increased bus stops here? And those are things we haven't, it's hard to write into zoning, but it's things that I think would, could come about.
Maybe, maybe in this document, there's an opportunity for like, uh, after all this, a bulleted, other considerations will come, other considerations for the permitting process, and it can include all these kinds of things, this is a simple bullet point, so that point is, so that others see that we're thinking about this also.
Right. Yeah, the bus frequency, to me, would be really important, I, I think, you know, even for you drive, it's something that staff's talked about, and, you know, if, right, if we have more applicants there, you know, is it, I think we have to start engaging in those conversations about, okay, well, what routes, you know, can we adjust a route or do something to really serve the residents?
In my head, I'm, I'm going back to those conversations I had with planning directors, well, a long time ago now, two or more years ago, and wondering, because I do remember some of them were town cities were encouraging this kind of approach to that, solving their housing problem, as opposed to building them on campus or managing distribution through the existing community, you know, like a distant minimum distancing type regulations, which are obviously very, so, Nate, do you know, or do we have a sense of cities or places that would have gone down this road, established the, by one means or another, zoning that allows for dense partial portions of the existing residential areas to become denser student housing districts, and then to see whether there are what kind of regulatory impositions they've put with a view to achieving what we're talking about, in other words, who can we learn from here who's already done this? Do we, do we have, do we have, I mean, what about, I don't know whether Ithaca has felt the need to do this with their college town, or whether Orno, they've also got a kind of a college town on the other side of the river, but maybe, I know Newark in Delaware, I think, where taking some portion of the the, the housing in the center of town and, and trying to rezone it in the way we're talking about. I don't know whether they're using overlays, but.
Yeah, I think those are, yeah.
So maybe I should go back and, and see whether there's anything we can learn from the folks, the cities that have, you know, towns like Amherst, that have been creating these development opportunities within their civic fabric.
Yeah, I know, yeah, Ithaca's one, I was even thinking, you know, Boulder.
Boulder, yes.
I, I'd attended a few, you know, international town gown kind of webinars last year, and UC Boulder is committed to building a lot of housing. Boulder is much bigger, but it is interesting, they've designated some areas. I, I think it's on and off campus, actually, and so they've, they've come up with this idea. I mean, I think it's, it's a few thousand beds is what their kind of vision was, I don't know, it hasn't been implemented, but they, you know, they were starting it last year. And it was, you know, I think it was like, gosh, was it five thousand beds in five years or five thousand beds in ten years, but there's some pretty big number.
Yes, so, and it, 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 it's not quite so important that the town is a similar profile to Amherst here, because we're talking rather more specifically about housing, student housing, high-density student housing
Right.
in close proximity to settled neighborhoods, and what are, what regulatory structures permit the agencies? What tools are they drafting into their enabling of land use legislation, so that I could probably ask those kind of questions, but I, I, I can't always get to the people because I'm just, you know, Joe's citizen, and it's a bit of an effort for me to get them to pick up the phone, but it's not impossible. If you know people that, in Boulder, I think I know who to talk to in Orno and Ithaca, if they're still there, but if you know somebody in Boulder that you think would be, I could, I could talk to, I wouldn't mind making the call, making the calls.
Gee, I don't, yeah, I don't, not at the top of my head, I'd have to go back and look, but yeah, I think it's.
Of course.
Yeah. No, thanks, Bruce, I think those are some nice examples, and I think it can, can be done, I just, yeah, I, and Jesse, I like your idea. I know someone else had said to me since the last planning board discussion, oh, could we include more areas in an overlay like this? I said, well, when this was discussed ten years ago, as the apartment was called, like, you know, say like the apartment complex overlay, or multi-unit development overlay, included every property in town, so say there's forty properties, and I think it was overwhelming. And it was really then hard to have conditions that were appropriate for every place, and so it just, I think it, 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 you know, it, it was looked at and assessed, but it didn't move forward beyond that, and I, I still think that would be the case, and so, but I think maybe Fearing is, can be adapted to, to work here, and I'm not sure how many other places could support this, and so, but I think if we like where this is going, you know, there are other multi-unit developments in town, and so could we take a lower density approach to places?
Yeah. Oh, by the way, another argument that we will encounter is the whether it's wishful thinking, or whether it's solidly based in projected data, that the population of the, of UMass is, is going to drop, and that the accordingly, that the pressure, the problem we're trying to solve will tend to solve itself. To which my answer is, it seems to, it seems that that's correct, but the degree to which this happens relative to solving the problem, it's probably going to lessen the the, the extremity of it, but I'm not sure that the the projected diminished population of the UMass in, in the near term is, or even in the midterm, is going to be sufficient to make our problem go away.
It's, I mean, I have a little insight into that, at least what the impact won't be very significant, from everything I hear.
Okay.
Mostly, the impact will be more on smaller private places than that.
Jesse, if you would come saddled with a paragraph of cogent forcefully polite response to that proposition, that's probably a useful paragraph in the, you know, in the, in the conversation.
Sure.
Yeah, no, there's an article, I've read a few, but there is a really nice one.
Oh, really? Pull up the news, come on.
I'll try to find it, it was really great, it was actually, it was comparing satellite campuses to flagship universities, and what it found was, and it was put out this, this spring, this summer, that flagship campuses are still growing, you know, up to three percent. Satellite campuses are, are shrinking, so they featured, you know, in Illinois, the satellite campus, a hundred and sixty miles west of the main campus, and it's basically, it's over, right? And so this whole town, since the seventies, has built up, you know, it was a fifty thousand, forty thousand town. You know, the campus is shuttering, people are trying to figure out what to do, and they used like three examples from around the country of that, and then, and the flip side, they're saying, well, the main campus is, is thriving. You know, with new building and other things, and so, you know, it, it had cautionary tales in there as well, but it was interesting to read that, you know, there, this article's assessment was, you know, it a larger campuses can survive, I, I was kind of surprised actually to hear that this one in Illinois was actually wasn't doing well, because it was, it ended up being a big town, you know.
It sounds pretty big, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I'd be curious to read that also.
Yeah. Yeah, I can send that around, I, I thought I did, but I guess, I, I think I've had trouble finding it ever since I read it. So, yeah, I, you know, I agree though, Bruce, if, say, there was a, a reduced student age population, the vacancy rate and the turnover rate in Amherst and the area is so, is so small that it's not healthy, so even if we had a little bit bigger, you know, of those rates, it's, to me, that's a healthy market, right?
This is, honestly, that's what we want. The whole purpose of this is to bring housing price down.
Right.
In order to do that, there has to be negative pressure, or at least stabilize pricing, you know, it's never going to come down, let's be realistic, but at least flatten it out. But I think that's the goal. At least in my mind.
Yes, I, I think so.
We don't want to say that to landlords, right, but, or developers, but I think that again, I'm an economist, I don't understand all the forces involved, but logically, that's the only way I understand it.
Yeah, no, I agree, when, you know, there's a panel in Boston of four, you know, a four, four-person panelist recently, right, and there was, they're from different think tanks, and some, the audience was asking them kind of strategies, and one of them mentioned rent control. You know, this was a few weeks ago, and ever since then, there's been all these articles about how bad rent control is, but I'm like, well.
No, I, it's the other thing I've, on my list to work on, like, and I know it's not a planning board thing, but I think the town really should consider it.
Yeah, I think, right, right, and so now there's already movement afoot to say, to try to prevent it, because there was a bill or some idea to allow it through, you know, individual municipalities could elect to use it as opposed to having it be a statewide thing, but, um, you know, what this panel said is that it's not, you know, it's one strategy, right, but it, it could have an immediate effect.
Yes, that's why I see the benefit.
Yep. And, you know, and you can put, you can put factors of growth in there, right? Whether it's a 5%, whatever it is, 10%, some, some, something, but.
Yeah, I've been following the East Hampton news pretty carefully.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, did we make it through? Yeah. Or no, you just jumped to the end.
I, I just put the other considerations. I mean, um, yeah.
I think it's great.
Yeah.
But, but there's still.
There's still a lot here to look at. I think what we kind of left off was building height and some things, but.
Yeah. Well, we've, this, we've jumped to this other document here. This was the one that we began reading at the last meeting, wasn't it?
It is. Yeah. So there's all these, I, you know, track changes and things. We've been comments, we've been having your questions. Yeah. I saw Fred had his hand up, Jesse.
Oh, sorry. Fred, go ahead.
I was gonna comment on rent control. That, uh, that was a, a major political issue, uh, in many places in the state. Somerville, Amherst, uh, Amherst appeared on the verge of going that way. And then you had the, uh, uh, the initiative petition that, uh, took this entirely, they, they, this circulated a petition to completely legalize, uh, make, make it impossible for any municipality to support rent control. And that's state law, open and shut state law. And, um, the, uh, and the, the major political argument in favor of it was, uh, if you regulate it like that, you'll get less of it. And I, I think there is, uh, some experiential support for that. But, uh, it might, uh, just because I have an interest in this, I watched the legislature on this and I've watched uh, rent control get proposed from time to time. And it's, it seems to me that the, the legislature has sort of made it almost unspoken, taken a largely unspoken point of view that, uh, we're not going to touch this. We were gonna touch it and then the people by, you know, by statewide vote, uh, amended the general laws and, yeah, some of us will, uh, make some political statements around it, but we're not really going to take it, uh, take it seriously because uh, we don't want to end up, uh, this was a vote of the people and we don't want to get, get too much back into that. That's been my impression anyway, as I watched this over the last, uh, well, let's see, it would be almost exactly 30 years.
Yeah. Fred, is your hands still up or you, that legacy? There you go. Um, okay, looking at the clock, Nate, any other pressing things on details to discuss right now? And this feels like good progress on that document.
I think I would, um, you know, that rational document I'd touch up a little bit and that could be included in the planning board packet next week as, as well, this, you know, kind of overlay document again in the map.
Right.
You know, for the next planning board meeting, we still have the zoning amendments and then this. So, you know, I think we can get to, get to this and just keep it, you know, I think moving forward a little bit, right? I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Jesse, if, if you would, uh, you would talk to Kathy Shane and find out whether she has or they, because there are two of them, district one counselors have a meeting date in mind and whether they want to use that day to do this or whether they would want a, a separate, uh, and then if, if you can get Kathy, if you and Kathy can come up with a date or a week or a general time, then that could come to the, that data could be communicated to the board at the next meeting as well. And so along with reviewing the documents, so we could decide whether we would, could, or should be ready to, do a first public, uh, hearing, not a hearing, sorry, uh, an informational meeting or whatever the hell we want to call it. I don't know what it's called. It's not really a, well, I guess that's the point. If more than three of us, is it more than three or more than two of us were to attend this meeting, would it have to be advertised?
As a, uh.
We should avoid that.
Tell us, yeah.
I think we should avoid that. So maybe it should be, well, or not, I don't know. That's been, anyway, that's the conversation.
What if we're not there as official planning board member?
Yeah, I think the easiest, but to me, the easiest thing would be we could just post it.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, I'm not, that's fine. Um, just.
Okay.
The concern would be, I, I, the concern would be, Jesse, if you spoke and then someone else spoke from the board, um, whether or not you say you're there individually, it could just, you know, it could become like a serial conversation or some kind of conversation.
Sure. But, but then does that mean there have to be minutes and et cetera, et cetera?
Yeah, uh, yeah, me, I'll ask around and see what the best approach is. I, um, you know, just be one of those things where if somehow there was, someone thought there was a conversation happening outside of a public meeting, that's not what we'd want. Even, I agree, even if it was just like you making a comment, then Bruce making a comment and someone else making a comment, it doesn't.
Sure. I mean, I, I don't care either way. I'm seeing it out. He's getting it done. Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll talk with Kathy and let her know that's probably what would happen, just so they can be aware. Let's talk scheduling for a minute. You also, I sent the survey out. I sent it to everybody on planning board and only us replied in Angus, so. I appreciate you both, Fred and Bruce, prefer midday. I'm guessing Nate, you do as well. How about, would you be up for like two midday, one evening, two midday, one evening kind of approach?
Oh, whatever works for you.
Okay, I'll put together dates and times.
Do either. That's me. I don't, that the others.
Do either of you have a preference on, I think, I think 90 minutes is a good amount of time. That's sort of all I can do during the day. I also will propose probably alternating the 11 to 12:30 versus 11:30 to one, the, the both those, does that whole time window work for everybody?
Yep.
Okay, Fred, I'm not seeing any disagreement. Okay. All right. I'll send out a list of dates and times just to the four of us to make sure it all works and then we can formalize that and I'll let the others know.
Yeah, I will say, once, once, uh, comes September, for September, October, November, my evenings are pretty packed with kids and activities and other meetings. So.
Yeah. So if you can make it, obviously we can do midday step. That's fine. We'll, we'll figure that out.
All right. Yeah.
That's all I had. Uh, I did have, Nate, I'm hoping you can stay on for five or minutes after we end the meeting, something totally not planning board related. I want to ask you about.
Yeah, we'll have to, it's being recorded, so I'm not sure we can.
When we end the meeting, does it not stop?
I think the whole thing ends.
Okay, maybe I'll call you back. That's.
Sure. Yeah, that's, yeah, that'll work.
Okay. Anything else from, uh, Bruce or Fred?
Not for me.
Okay. Thanks, everyone. Uh, we'll see you next time.
Yeah, thanks, everyone.